Thank you. A call to order, the April 12th, 2022 Town Plan and Zoning Commission Meeting for Fairfield. We'll start with bills and communication, the minutes from our March 22nd meeting. May I have a motion on this item?
Move to approve.
Moved to approve by Commissioner Francis. Second by Commissioner Levy, thank you. Any comments, Commissioner Francis? You're on mute.
Page four, 6.3.8A. Is it missing the word, or do you want to delete, be at least two acres?
I'm not, I'm not understanding your question, the, on, on A, I think there should be another word.
638A.
Yeah.
Does everything have to be two acres now? Didn't we change it to acre and a half acre? So I thought it might be.
You're correct. There's some missing language there, so it, that.
Yeah, meet the minimum standard for that ear, that size lot, but.
Yeah, you're absolutely, you're absolutely right. I'm not sure why that, this is the wrong, um.
Well, it's the old one.
Piece in here. There, there should be some language in there that got the, there is, you're correct, that needs to be misplaced. It has to meet the requisite lot area of the zone that it's in. You're absolutely correct.
And Mr. Went, is it worth tabling, just to maybe take a once-over over again, or?
Yeah, you can. We had a correction. I had a late correction today. I noticed that on the vote, that the minutes were incorrect with respect to the opt-out of, of the accessory apartments, which I corrected. But in so doing, I may have inserted the wrong version of this in here. So, at, at your discretion, Mr. Chairman, but it, we, it, it wouldn't hurt to double-check.
Right.
Commissioner Francis, worth maybe tabling to the next meeting? Commissioner Levy, you're second? Okay, I just saw yes, none of the head yes.
Yes.
Any other comments, or can we table to just let the, our staff get another once-over? Move to, the motion on the, motion pending is to table this item. All in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. I think I see seven, any opposed?
I was not abstaining, I was not present for that meeting.
Okay, fair enough. So, six, uh, in favor. I, any opposed? No, and Commissioner Harrison states. So, move on to, excuse me. Old business. Zoning Regulation Amendment, the application of the Economic Development Commission to amend the various sections outlined in our agenda of the zoning regulations. Mr. Went.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. The Economic Development Commission is seeking an amendment to our regulations to reduce restrictions for outdoor dining at food service establishments. Outdoor dining, as this commission is aware, has grown to be a popular option for restaurants. The first permit that this commission approved for outdoor dining dates back to 1990, and since then, there's been a total of 63 approvals for additional outside dining. In 2013, the commission approved an amendment to the parking regulations that allows for the first 150 square feet of outdoor dining not to contribute to the patron floor area for the purpose of the parking calculation. And this, this proposal is seeking to increase that number. We have during the last couple of years, under an executive order, provided for a COVID protocol administrative permit that allowed temporary relief from zoning regulations. That should be noted that during the pendency of this application, the state legislature passed a bill to extend that provision, which was set to expire on March the 31st to April 30th of next year. So, our COVID protocol permits have another year lifespan to them pursuant to that recent extension. This, the overall, though, the overall experience that we've had in, in the COVID protocol permits allowing folks to do a little bit more, I think, has demonstrated that, that outdoor dining can be supported without requiring additional parking. And to that end, this proposal includes the following three recommended changes. Firstly, the proposal seeks to increase the area for dining, which, for which additional parking is not required, from the current 150 feet to 575 square feet. That number was chosen as it represents roughly the median area of all the COVID protocol permits that were issued. The second provision for this proposal is seeking to eliminate the reference to seasonal outdoor dining, such that restaurants would be allowed greater flexibility as weather conditions and patron demand permits. And the proposal also recommends the commission consider the elimination of the requirement for annual recertification of those permits. There isn't a regulation attached to that, it's just been the routine condition of approval that this commission has imposed on all outside dining permits. Lastly, the proposal seeks to eliminate language for restaurants that requires, that, that, that they provide table service, and that, that restaurants that do provide table service have at least three-quarters of those customer seats located within an enclosed building. That's the overview of the proposal. I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission might have.
Thank you, Mr. Went. May I have a motion on this item? Commissioner Francis, you're on mute.
I'm sorry. I, I'd like to move to table it until February next year when we do our annual review. But I'll move to approve it for discussion purposes if people wish.
Uh, Commissioner, so, what's, the motion is right now to approve, just to discuss it, okay. Commissioner.
Are you making an amendment, though, to it, Meg?
No.
Let's get a second first.
Yes, Commissioner Braun.
Yeah, I'm not clear, Steve, on what we're doing, so.
I would like, motion to table.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Right now, the motion, while I understand Commissioner Francis initially said that she wanted potentially table the item, she has moved, I believe, to approve for discussion purposes.
If we move to table it, there's no discussion, is there?
Well, there's a discussion about the, the, the idea of tabling it, maybe not, I guess, and I, obviously, people, I guess, can get into the merits of it as well. So, I would feel free to make the motion you want to make.
All right, I would move to table. Not that I, I don't strongly support restaurants, but.
No, of course.
Because I think it's unnecessary at this time since they've got over a year now.
Okay, well, let's get a second before, let's get a second to see if it's a second, if anybody seconds it, number one. Motion to table, Commissioner Braun.
And motion, I'm seconding her tabling.
Okay. All right, so now back, I'm sorry, Commissioner Francis, I just wanted to get the procedure as formalistic as it may be. So, please continue.
Well, I, I strongly support our our regulations as, as they exist. I, I think, I have respect for the commission, our predecessor commissions, who have developed these, these laws over 30 years, as Jim said, and I, I don't want to make very strong changes. I, I think it's, um, outdoor dining has grown quite considerably, and that there are side effects like no, there's no parking, there's no on-street parking, it, it's just more customers. So, it's harder for others, and it, it puts a stress on other small businesses. And it, they've also used their own parking lots to expand, and I know it's a catch-22, it's hard. But I definitely want to continue each application, reviewing each application for what it's initially presented, and and every February, I, because it gives the commission a chance to look at all 70 or so restaurants and go, this one is always putting its chairs too far out of the sidewalk, this one is, has put too many tables inside. I mean, we know as we use these, and I would encourage us to get out of our cars, all of us, once in a while, and just walk down the post-road, some of those strip malls on Black Rock Turnpike, even King's Highway, King's Highway Cof, and, and just really look at these restaurants and these businesses so that you really know what you're voting for, do vote for it. And you know, I, I think that the sidewalks particularly, we have to pay attention to, because people with strollers, with canes, with walkers, they have a problem, particularly on the post-road. And in the small strip malls, they've got tables, but, you know, they just don't really leave an awful lot of room. So, I don't know, those are the type of things I think we should consider carefully. And, and that all of us should pay attention to them over the next eight or 10 months, and walk and really look at what's going on. That's all for now.
Okay, so, Commissioner Braun is next. Obviously, she's, she'll go, and I saw Commissioner Harrison. What I would suggest, though, for staff and even for myself to think about is, if Commissioner Francis is thinking tabling until next year, if the proper vehicle is to table or to deny, considering the timeframe, but we don't have to, let's not worry about that right this second. Commissioner Braun.
Yeah, so, um, I support Commissioner Francis's motion to table. I don't know which vehicle to use, because we don't want it showing up on our agenda every, every two weeks, probably. But I think because the governor has extended the time period through the end of next April, a year from now, after we put it on for, for today, that's a huge change in my consideration. And I would like to use that year to, to, to study and review, hear from other businesses, if there's an impact, an adverse impact on their businesses based on, you know, the restaurants being open. And also, see if we would like to fine-tune it a little bit more, so that we have more control over, you know, parking, traffic, safety, even design elements, to see if we just want to leave it totally up to the restaurants to determine what they want to do. Also, I was a little confused last time, and it's going to be dealt with when we deal with it, about the parking. If they're in the parking lot already, is that part of what they can, that's a decrease from what they have now. It's just confusing to me. I, I think it needs a little more discussion. But that can be done if and when we take it up. So I would definitely support, um, tabling it or denying it, you know, without prejudice to, you know, restore it back, back in February next year, when we know what's going on with everything, including snow removal. We can have a really bad snow year this year. We might have a bad one next year. That might have some impact on it. Thank you.
I think we learned from a previous application for regulation amendments, we don't need to worry about denials without prejudice. They can be brought up anytime. Commissioner Berman, that's true, I think, right? I think you brought it, well, we can worry about that later, but.
I think, I think that technically, we are not required to consider it again within a year, but I think we can certainly if we choose to.
All right, so maybe with, without prejudice will be a good signal to the applicant if we go that way. Commissioner Harrison, you're up.
Yeah, no, thank you. And I think this is a beautiful idea, in theory. No question, COVID has wreaked havoc on the restaurant industry. It's also hit a lot of other industries, like the retail shops. You know, you go around downtown, Black Rock Turnpike, you know, a lot of retail stores have shuttered. So I'm a little hesitant on giving, you know, special privileges to, to one group of businesses, quite frankly. But also, I, I do think it's a good idea, and I'd like to learn more about it. I'd like to see, you know, maybe, you know, an evaluation by the police department on how this impacts pedestrian safety. I saw a woman the other day, actually, on the post-road trip on the sidewalk by one of the restaurants, because they did have extended outdoor seating. So I would just like to hear from multiple stakeholders before we give special privileges to the restaurants. Again, I think it's a good idea. We all support our restaurants in town, but I think we need more digging, and there's no rush here. I mean, we have until next year to, to, you know, go in favor of this, or we're not. So, I think we just need more time. Thank you.
Commissioner Berman.
I, I think that, you know, the extension of outdoor dining and the expansion of it is a good idea. It was an idea whose time had come. That being said, you know, since the legislature has approved the extension of outdoor dining, at least through April next year, that does give us some additional time to see whether we want to do anything different or ask for any additional information before we make a decision on what to do as a municipality. So I would be in favor of a denial without prejudice, or tabling it for a specific period of time, or whatever the appropriate vehicle is.
I have some thoughts, but any other commissioners? Commissioner Ford, and then Commissioner Levy.
Yeah, I tend to, I don't really think all that hard about the issue of tabling it, you know, so I, I'm glad Commissioner Francis brought it up. It probably does make sense. I, I'm, I, Fairfield heads, you know, I'm pretty much a lifelong resident. We have been way behind the curve in outdoor dining. You go to other areas of the country, and it's, it's just a totally different experience. And we have so many wonderful, great restaurants here, that I think, you know, to, um, to, um, to be able to have, offer, you know, outdoor dining on an expanded basis, I think is in our best interest, and I think it's good for the town. It'll just draw more development. And, and I think people want it, with so many new people moving into town, I think they probably not only want it, but they expect it. So, I think, you know, I, I gotta tell you, you convinced me, you know, 10 minutes ago, I was like, well, why don't we just, you know, you know, adopt it now? But I, I, I think it's prudent to kind of think, think about how exactly, this is the, I think we have an opportunity here to really kind of set the tone for the next, you know, 10, 15 years of how we want, you know, the post-road, Black Rock Turnpike, King's Highway to look in terms of outdoor dining. So I, I think it's, it's probably a, a good idea to take a long look at it, and, you know, so I, I support it. So, deny it however you want to proceed, but I would like to see this before us again within a year, with a solid plan going forward.
Commissioner Levy.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with tabling it today, but I would not want to put it on a extended timetable. When I moved into this town in 1980, there were all three restaurants. And anytime one wanted to go out to eat, we went to Westport, while the tables turned, and I'd like to keep it that way. My concern is that someone, our regulations provide guidance to business owners. And if we're reluctant, even though it seems like there's a groundswell of support for this, I'd be concerned that somebody might be thinking of opening a restaurant in Fairfield and be reluctant to do so if they're not, if there's concern about the extent of outdoor dining. So while I have no problem with tabling it today, I would like it, you know, brought up within, you know, what, let's say, a month or two. I don't know, you know, what additional information, I mean, our Economic Development Commission has already come out in favor of it. You know, whatever additional information we need could be obtained in the interim. In fact, we may well want to look into whether or not the amount of seating space allowed might actually be increased beyond the 500 and something proposed. Those are all things that could be examined, but I would want to keep it on the front burner. Thanks.
Commissioner Harris, let me go first, if you don't mind. Tabling or denying for whatever the vehicle is for, I would say, I mean, I don't, I think Commissioner Levy's point of next year may be too long. It seems to me either later this year, you know, I don't, I'm not sure one or two months is a good idea, considering new applications that may arise, but maybe later this year, late summer or fall, maybe a good idea. It will give the time for, not just the economic development, but any other stakeholders, whether it be the Chamber of Commerce, or anybody else to get their teeth in if they haven't already done so. The one among, I'll say the word compromise, but it's one issue that I think we should consider taking up today. Maybe, if, as I said, either a compromise or throwing a bone to the Economic Development Committee Department is, Mr. Barnhart was actually pretty clear, surprisingly, I thought, but pretty clear that the one priority he saw of the three was the seasonal aspect of it. If we could get rid of the seasonal aspect, because, and I forget the dates off the top of my head, but I think it's between April and October, Mr. Went, is that true? What he thought was, there may be times in November, which I think is probably more the case than anything else, unlike December, not like March, where if the weather permits it, if they have heating, if the, the patrons want it, the businesses may, businesses may, in their own discretion, be allowed to use the outdoor dining. And that makes sense to me, I don't think it changes the impact of parking, or seating, or anything like that. And it's obviously not important either. I mean, I'm, I'm sure it's not going to make or break any, I hope, Fairfield restaurant. But that is the one thing that I think we probably could, if everybody was inclined, obviously, grant without too much of a hassle, too much more thought behind it. As I said, I think the, the policy behind it is sound, something I think we would, you know, would happen, or would, if you were in, if you were inclined to support it, would, would support, support now, later, whenever. So that would be my only thought is, while the other two items, yes, more thought could, could bring immense value, or some value. The seasonal thought, especially because it was a priority thought from Mr. Barnhart, seems to me something we could address today, without any real major impact, and somewhat of a small compromise. Commissioner Harrison, and then I don't know who came up, Commissioner Bra, Berman or Levy, so I'll let you two find it out next.
Yeah, again, you know, the good thing here is, we do have time on our side. I don't think we need to rush into anything. You know, we did hear from one group of stakeholders, and that, that they're obviously a very important component to this. But we also need to hear from other people, and I think I'm very serious when, I really don't feel comfortable voting for this tonight, because I have not heard from the police department. This obviously will have some kind of implications on safety. I, I know it will. And I, I just think we just need to consider everything. I'm not saying, no, I think this is a really good idea, and I think this is the, you know, natural evolution here with, with restaurants as, as a whole. So, I think we had the gift of time, and I would just like to get more input, and Mr. Went, I don't know if we asked questions for you to the police department, but I would like to, just to learn more from the various stakeholders we have in Fairfield. Thank you.
Let's go with Commissioner Berman, since he was on time, and I'm being facetious. Commissioner Levy.
No disrespect to Commissioner Levy, thank you. What if we were to table this to a specific meeting in September, and that should give us ample time to think it over, and for commissioners who have questions, or who want additional information from our town departments to ask, you know, to inquire of those departments and ask whatever questions they have through staff. The public hearing is closed, so we can't take any new testimony or evidence, but we can certainly inquire of our own departments if people have questions. And I think another, you know, five months should be ample for us to do that.
Commissioner Levy. You're on mute.
Um, I just have one question, the provision regarding annual certif, recertification. When is that, when do the restaurants have to recertify? And do we want to help our staff out, maybe eliminate that requirement, if it's within the next few months?
Commissioner Went, uh, excuse me, Mr. Went, when is the recertification?
Yeah, um, if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I got a couple things. To answer the, the immediate question, what, what we have done, all, the, the conditions of approvals, that they have to apply for recertification, we, that was kind of a spotty track record, so in the last several years, what we have done administratively is compiled the, the list that was circulated, that spreadsheet, and put it on a commission agenda at an appropriate time for a, an, an en masse vote to, to recertify, so to speak, all of the applications. And if, and if I may, Mr. Chairman, I think what I'm hearing, I, I think I'm hearing general support for the concept, interest in hearing from other parties, and also agreement that, obviously, since the legislature has continued it, I, I agree that, that we are not time pressured here. But from a staff perspective, I would respectfully suggest that if we're talking about pushing this off to September, so to speak, or, or whatever timeframe this commission is comfortable with, I think the prudent thing to do would be to deny it without prejudice, and then re, you know, take it up again at the appropriate time. I think their understanding here is, and certainly will be communicated to Mr. Barnhart and the business community, that, that there's certainly support for this, and the, the legislative amendment creates that time buffer, so we're not time pressured to act for the, those restaurants to have the benefit of outside seating for this upcoming season. Circling back to Commissioner Braun's question, I, I just want to make it clear, regardless of how we proceed, the, the opportunity to occupy parking spaces with outside seating is a provision that exists in that temporary legislation. So we are, we are not, this amendment does not anticipate allowing folks to occupy parking unless approved by this commission. Also, I want to make clear that the amendment as proposed would still require an applicant to make a site plan application to this commission for approval, as they did prior to the COVID protocol permit. So we're not, we're not proposing, there's no proposal to bypass commission approval for outside dining, regardless of how this regulation shakes out. So I just wanted to make those two things clear. I do agree, we're not under any time pressure, but if we are considering an extended tabling, I think it would be prudent to deny it without prejudice, would be, in my opinion, the, the proper move, and, and take this up again when the commission thinks it's the appropriate time.
Yeah, and that's my thought, too, as I was listening, because if we just table it, we can certainly get input from our department and staff, but not from outside, because the hearing is closed. So, if the idea is to get more information, I would think we want to do it right, and the hearing wasn't, did not take too long anyways, so it's not massive import there. Commissioner Levy, was your hand up previously, or? That's what I thought. Okay, Commissioner Braun.
Follow-up on Commissioner Levy's question, for Jim, for Mr. Went. Did the tempor, I get confused between the original regs, the temporary regs, and the new regs. So the temporary regs, did that extend the seasonal, longer? How, what about now, the, the seasonal aspect?
All right, I'll, I'll answer this. The, the, the only reference to seasonal is in the parking regulations, where we say, where, where we say, the regulations say in section 28, that the first 150 square feet of seasonal outdoor dining does not require any additional parking. That's the only reference to seasonal. Every application that this commission has reviewed and approved for outside dining has imposed a consistent condition of approval, that it be seasonal and subject to recertification. The temporary COVID protocol legislation eliminates any reference to seasonality. And so, folks have, depending on their investment in heating systems, have with some success, extended their season, if you will, beyond the end of October, which was the typical.
Okay.
Season. So it's, it's been a mix. The ref, so the, the proposal is, is proposes to eliminate the reference to seasonality. The temporary COVID legislation has eliminated any reference to dates for operation. And, and hopefully that addressed your question. If it didn't, please, please let me know.
No, no, that really did. So that means that because everything has been extended till the end of, I think, April next year, that seasonal aspect is not a factor. So I would like to make a friendly amendment to the motion to table to that seasonal aspect is not a factor. So I would like to make a friendly amendment to the motion to table to to not table without prejudice, to deny it without prejudice.
It sounds like what the chairman has come up with and I think he's right.
Yeah, and I think even Mr. Wendt's explanation kind of moots my initial thought of a compromise. So, Commissioner Francis is amending her motion to deny without prejudice. Commissioner Braun, you were the second to that, I believe, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so you obviously agree with, since you made the friendly request for a family amendment. Any other commissioners like to speak on this? I think we've discussed.
I would just encourage people, all 10 of us, to really pay attention as we patronize restaurants and small businesses over the next few months. Apparently, we're not going to let this go to February.
With a denial, with a denial without prejudice, we would be somewhat, we would be leaving it to the applicants to bring it forth. We've kind of given the indication of, you know, when we would want to see it. Depending on how things go, it would be kind of outside of our control. Well, no, we can always do it on our own. But as far as when an application is brought by an applicant other than us, that would be outside of our control.
Yeah, I would say to that, that the, again, this legislation expires in next April. So I think there will be a desire to move forward with something, reschedule a public hearing so there's time to implement something that the commission is comfortable with in time for that to be effective in place before the expiration of this temporary legislation. What that date exactly is, I can't tell you, but that would be the game plan going forward. But we appreciate the comments and concerns that everybody has raised this evening.
Can we put this to a vote?
Sure.
All in favor of the motion to deny without prejudice, please say aye or raise your hand. I think I see seven, but any opposed? Any abstained? I think it passes unanimously. Okay. Next item, we go to our public hearing. It is versus 1609 Fairfield Beach Road, special exception and coastal site plan application of Gregory Sargent pertaining to the demolition and reconstruction of a single-family dwelling in the Beach District. Mr. Wendt, I forget where we are in this. Are we in public comment, I think, at this point still?
My recollection, Mr. Chairman, is that, and I'm sure I will be corrected if I'm wrong, but public comment was wrapping up, I thought. I believe Attorney Green, what's that?
I think we left it open in case
That's correct.
The applicant had new materials to give.
That's correct. The applicant last week submitted some additional materials to you, including a new updated survey that was at issue last time, and we did receive late today some additional materials from Attorney Green. I don't recall myself whether or not Attorney Green was finished with his presentation or if there were any other members of the public. But I know at a minimum, Mr. Sargent, I know wants to make a rebuttal, but I see Mr. Green there, so I'll let him.
So let me make an announcement. I know, Mr. Green, I assume you're going to be up. To any member of the public that wishes to be heard on this matter or any matter, but I'll make that announcement later as well. Please sign up in the chat and let us know if you would like to be heard on this matter. And when I call future matters, sign up at that point as well. I will also make this oral request as well, should anybody want to speak. Ms. Attorney Green, I do believe you are up first, so to speak, though, in this public comment portion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, Joel Green of the Law Offices of Green and Gross, representing the budding neighbors at 1623 Fairfield Beach Road, Barbara Bertozzi Castelli and Jose Miller. When we concluded the public hearing three weeks ago, I was presenting our response to the application. I note that the applicant has submitted new materials into the record. I don't know, in order to sort of complete the application, I don't know whether the commission is inclined to have the applicant introduce the new materials or whether you want me to introduce the new materials and respond.
You certainly don't need to introduce them. I will let, let me ask you this. I mean, would you prefer Mr. Sargent to introduce the materials to go back to kind of that regular format? Or do you feel comfortable just responding to them as they are presented?
I'm happy to do either, but I think it's probably appropriate for the applicant to present the new materials he submitted, then I and the public can respond and then the applicant has his rebuttal.
Mr. Sargent, is that okay with you?
That's fine by me, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, so why don't we do that? That does follow the normal procedure, so that can be our default going forward.
Okay, so then for the record, I am Greg Sargent. I'm the owner and applicant for 1609 Fairfield Beach Road. As I mentioned three weeks ago, I, my family and I, we're the owners of a property that has two dwellings on it. And so we are looking for a special exception to 11.4, which is designed for older properties looking to be updated to current zoning and FEMA standards. I'll just briefly, very briefly review what I did, said three weeks ago. This has gone before the ZBA and was approved. The neighbors, representing my Mr. Green, objected to that approval by the ZBA. It was put before a judge. A judge said the approval for a variance of 11.1.1 was the inappropriate path for me to rebuild and instead come before the commission under 11.4 with a special exception. That's the background. The approval by the zoning department prior to the ZBA hearing, the ZBA board, the chairman, the surveyor surveyed the property and surveyed Mr. Green's client's property. All refer to the closest point to Long Island Sound, the setback to Long Island Sound as the closest point. And Mr. Green's clients, of course, objected to me using Close Point to rebuild my new home. As I mentioned three weeks ago, of course, his clients rebuilt their new home last year using the Close Point. So it's a little bit disingenuous to rebuild under the process of the zoning department, the ZBA. And then when I go try and do it, they object to that and now hire an attorney to fight me. But that's in the past. Here we are now in front of the commission. What I added to the record was really some very simple things.
Mr. Sargent, let me know if you want me to share the screen at all.
Yes, thank you, Emmeline. I think what the chairman asked me to do was to introduce the new material first and then Mr. Green speaks and then I rebut his presentation. Is that right, Mr. Chairman?
It is, yes. You do not feel the need to do rebuttal at this point. This is just limited to the new material that you submitted.
I got it. Yep, thanks. So I'm not sure, mind, you have access to that or not, but I guess we'll talk about it. It's very simple. The pack was very simple. The first thing introduced to the commission here was my warranty deed. And the warranty deed is just comes from the records from our town. There it is. Great, thank you, Emmeline. Warranty deed just shows exactly what I bought. And if you go to the second page there in the back, it shows that I own from the Sound to the Creek. That the property is contiguous. It is not a separate property. It is all and only one. And Mr. Green's assertion and his, I'm not going to go any further. Wait for the rebuttal. All right, so that's the warranty deed showing my property. Next page, please, Emmeline. This is just a picture of my home that's not on stilts. Okay, so if you took the home and put it in another part of town, this is what it would look like. It looks a little goofy when you're on the beach because you have garages and it's picked up to new FEMA standards, but I would consider this a pretty traditional home here in the town of Fairfield. And consistent with my neighborhood and the town's development. Okay, next. This is the picture of my neighbor who just built their new home. I think it could be argued that it's not consistent with the character of the Beach District or our town. And so I'm just looking for a contrast of what they have built relative to what I have built. You'll note also in this picture to their west, their neighbor to the west is also ungraded. So at some point, that house to the right, if they want to go to new FEMA standards, will be picked up. And so one can envision if they're fighting me to pick my home up. One can envision they're going to fight them to the west also picking their home up. This is just a document that I presented to the, I'm sorry, my plans presented to my neighbors. I have them sign, two people to the east signed off saying they liked it. And the one to the immediate outside west of Mr. Green's clients also signed it. So of the four around me, only Mr. Green's clients are objecting to this proposal. This is a rather interesting one. It's a little cloudy. It's an old crusty window, but this is the view from my bedroom. And you can see that their home just put up last year is virtually obstructing all of my views to the west. And why is that? Because the new FEMA standards mandate that the home be picked up roughly eight feet. Here's a little better view. That is them looking at my bedroom. And this is the view from my living room. So I'm looking at their open space beneath and their first floor above me, their second floor above me and their attic, their outside deck on the third floor, well above me. But again, you know, I didn't fight it because it's consistent with FEMA, FEMA code. And then lastly, this is just a portion of our general provisions, section two, which defines, gives the general definitions that every subsequent district in town must abide by, and I'll address that later. But I wanted to put in the general provisions for them to view if they need to later. This is the updated survey that Mr. Green was concerned about. The survey was finished approximately two and a half years ago, put in front of the ZBA. He was not comfortable with that. So this is a new survey just updated last week. And it confirms virtually everything that was on the same survey two and a half years ago. The average lot width is below 50, therefore my setbacks are five and a total of 10. And that's it, right, Emmeline?
Yes, that was the last page.
All right, that's it there, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission to Mr. Sargent on these documents? He will obviously have a chance to rebuttal, so we can have that time for any questions as well, but any questions now? Commissioner Braun.
When we were here last time, you'll have to refresh my memory. I think the big, can you explain the issue with, it has to do with mean high water and the width, the average width of the property, which if it's over, if it's 50 feet or over, you have a wider setback required than if it's under 50 feet. Can you explain if mean high water changed from the older numbers that were on the older plans to the newer updated survey that you did now? Do the mean high, because that has something to do with figuring out the average width, I guess, how far you go in any direction to figure out the average width of the property, I think, as I recall. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, Commissioner, you're right on the mark there. So the the distance from my existing house right now to mean high water actually shrunk. And so if you can imagine, since that portion of my property is wider towards the water, then as you shrink that, the average lot width goes down. So my average lot width went down from 49.8 or so, I want to say, down to 49.3. So I'm still below 50. It's gone against me, actually. But that would mean that my setbacks are still five and a minimum from each side and 10 in total.
And the dispute between you and the neighbors is that if it's 50, that your house can't be situated where it is because it's within the longer, the larger setback, whereas if it's under 50 for the average width, your shorter setback to that neighbor's side would be applicable. And the other part of the argument had to do with the rear lot that's across Fairfield Beach Road that borders on the creek, whether that is included. And I saw your deed. It does look like it's one lot. I think Attorney Green had a separate argument that if there's a public right of way or a street that traverses it, that changes the analysis. Do you have any, I guess I'm asking you about rebuttal right now, I apologize, but I'm just curious if you dealt with that in your new materials.
I will address that in rebuttal.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Any other member of the commission? Attorney Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We're now back in public comments, so obviously Attorney Green will finish and then we'll see if anybody else has comments. Attorney Green.
Thank you. Again, for the record, Joel Green. So I appreciate some of the submissions that the applicant brought and that the applicant has updated its site plan and that the elevation of mean high water was calculated as of April 1. Unfortunately, the site plan continues to be insufficient and missing data. And by the way, we don't take any issue with raising the house to FEMA compliance. And we understand that that's something that all homes that are renovated to more than 50% of their value at the beach have to do. And my clients have never taken any issue with that. My lack of comfort with the drawing to Commissioner Braun's point was that the drawing was approximately, it showed an average width that basically was two or three inches, two inches. It was the difference between being, having a setback of five feet versus six feet and an average width, it was 49.97 or whatever it was. Therefore, for every, I think it was, I can't remember what the ratio, but I think I had identified it at the last hearing, but for every foot or two that mean high water moves, that changes the average width of a lot. And so we disagree on that and the document continues to be incomplete. And I spoke to Mr. Trankis. And the fact of the matter is, and if we can have screen sharing, I would appreciate it.
Did you want me to share what you submitted today?
I'm happy to do it.
Okay.
If you can see my screen now.
Yes.
So you'll see that the mean high water calculation was completed and the C J L coastal jurisdiction line was completed, was verified on April 1. But what is not in this survey is the width of the lot at this point. This comes down to the average width is now, according to the according to the applicant, is about six inches below 50 feet with 49.3. So 0.7 feet or whatever that calculates out to probably seven or eight inches. But you can see the mean high water line here where my cursor is. And there was no calculation done of the width of the lot at this point. Therefore, I can't do a calculation myself. We can't do a calculation without that point. The burden is on the applicant to provide those dimensions and the applicant hasn't done that. Now, so we disagree about we disagree about the data that should be provided and we disagree about the applicability of the regulations. We disagree about the, first of all, the calculation of lot width and we disagree about the location of the front wall. And the applicant, I'm kind of And the applicant, I, I, I'm kind of at a loss because the applicant keeps saying that he wants the same benefits that my client got. That somehow my clients are being inconsistent by insisting that he honor the rule that his new home be no closer than the front wall of his old home. And he's suggesting somehow that my clients didn't do that. And that is simply not the case. And my client's home complies with the front wall of the existing home that had been there. And I can show you, uh, just bear with me for one moment and I can get this document.
Go to the survey, Joe. George. Mr. Green, go to the survey. You're wrong.
Mr. Sargent, just let Attorney Green, uh, have his comments.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman.
Here is a document that I'm presenting to the commission and this is an overlay that presents both the original survey of my client's property and the as-built that was completed after they had constructed their new home. Now, my client's home, their original home is here. And the wall was here. It was just two point six feet off the west property line. And it was twenty one point six feet off the eastern property line. And you can see that the property lines up, the line lines up perfectly with the existing home that had been there. And that is exactly what they are asking Mr. Sargent to do. Nothing more, nothing less. My clients had hoped to rotate their house slightly. My clients had hoped to move their house closer, but they weren't permitted to do that. And, uh, just bear with me. In the case of the applicant's home, the red is the location of the existing home. This dark black line is the back of the proposed house. And you can see that this home is significantly in front of the existing face of the house. Now, as I indicated, my clients had moved their home further away from their western neighbor. And while mod, you know, approximately six feet closer to Mr. Sargent's property, but there's plenty of room, twelve point two feet. On, I'm sorry, it would be on this side, about fourteen feet between the property line and my client's home. Mr. Sargent, on the other hand, his existing home is one point nine feet off the eastern property line. And it was, and I know you can't read this, it got blurred, but nineteen point four feet from the property line, the property of my clients. And Mr. Sargent is going to great trouble to move his house all the way across the lot and leaving again five feet between the property line and his home and the proposed home. And twelve feet on the other side. And he's doing that because he wants to create a view for the cottage behind it. But my clients take issue with that. We have provided you, uh, well, let me just say this. So we are in conflict on the location of the house. So we're in conflict on the interpretation of the regulation. And we are in conflict on the width calculation regulation. But that's fine. The applicant keeps stating that I am in full compliance with all of these standards. But the fact of the matter is these are not just hard standards. And when this commission adopted these regulations, you said that you had to honor the special exception standards. So besides having this conflict about the literal interpretation of the regulations, the bigger piece here is that this commission has the right to look at these projects. And let me also say this, I've provided the commission and I submitted this afternoon a copy of Judge Radcliffe's decision. And I know there are a lot of lawyers on the commission, but, um, even for non-lawyers, it's fairly easy to read and I agree, I, I disagree with some of the applicant's characterizations of Judge Radcliffe's decision. But I do agree that the judge did suggest that the special exception process was the appropriate process for the applicant to follow. But what the applicant seems to be missing is that there are standards that give this commission discretion when it comes to imposing the standards required for a special exception. Significantly, it says in twenty seven point four point one, I also submitted that this afternoon. And I know you have the regulations, but I just wanted to be highlighted in the record that the location type, character and size of use and buildings and structures shall be in harmony with and conform to appropriate orderly development of the town and the neighborhood and not hinder or discourage appropriate development and use of adjacent property or impair its value. So the regulations vest in this commission a lot of discretion to look at these kinds of projects on a case by case basis. Now, in terms of the property value, the applicant has submitted nothing uh, with respect to the impairment of the property value of my client. The applicant has not offered any evidence and nothing in its submission to counter the letter that I provided. And there is a letter from GL Property Consultants, uh, from Greg Lane that indicates that as this is configured, this will negatively impact the value of my client's property. Now, I did suggest at the conclusion of the hearing, uh, three weeks ago, that we are not asking the applicant not to develop his property. We are not asking the applicant not to raise his property to FEMA standards, which he must do based on the level of development. We are asking the applicant to honor the regulations. And in so doing that, and even if this commission should disagree with my interpretation of the regulations in terms of the rear honoring the rear wall of the existing structure as my clients did, what I'm asking this commission to do is to require a modest modification to this. And again, I had thrown out three, you know, I think four feet. And moving the thing four feet further away from my client's property and that, and honoring basically, there's like a three foot delta, three to four foot delta between the positions that the parties have on where the house is located. And it is not a big ask. And in doing so, my clients are satisfied that the conditions for approval for a special exception would be met. And it is not unreasonable. And I suggest that it is unreasonable to shift the house so dramatically against my client's property. And I'm saying that this commission does have that discretion under twenty seven point four to make that kind of finding. It is not unreasonable. And we are basically are trying to go along and get along while preserving and protecting our property at the beach as, as I know everyone does. And I know this commission sees these applications or these kinds of issues frequently. But I've got to submit that my clients are not being unreasonable in this instance. Uh, particularly based on the discretion that is vested in this commission. There's some other issues with the application, the CAM application that is before the commission.
Attorney Green? Let me ask, before you get to those other issues, let me ask a few questions if you don't mind.
Sure.
Um, with respect to the property value, the letter, um, and I haven't read it today and didn't do it yesterday, but, uh, last application is probably when I read it. When the appraiser reviewed it, did he review it under the guise that the setbacks or under the context that the setbacks proposed by Mr. Sargent were conforming or non-conforming? Or was it just simply, it's close to your house? I don't care what the setbacks are. It's going to impair your property. You understand, you understand my question?
So we did not, it is, I don't know that it's within his competence or expertise to, to start talking about compliance or non-compliance and to make that finding. And I didn't ask him to, for example, compare two locations where I showed him what I would think is a compliant uh, application or not. Oh, we did show him those renderings that are in the record that do show, and I can, I can put those up if you'd like to see them again.
No, that's okay. I just want to get the sense though, that essentially, it sounds like what you asked the appraiser was, it was to give a opinion about the property value with the house being built where proposed regardless of setbacks or conformity or anything like that.
Yeah, that's fair. Now, once, and though we did show him sort of what a compliant structure would be and that it was less intrusive. So he did have that knowledge, but I didn't ask him to make any conclusions based on that.
Well, what do you, no, that's, okay, I need to unpack what you just said. You showed him what you thought though, a compliance structure would be as far as setback distance though.
I didn't ask him to compare the two. I asked to look at the, I showed him the viewscape analysis, existing and proposed.
Okay, okay. So you, you showed where existing, where it was going to be and just asked him about how it affects property value.
I showed him existing. I showed him proposed and, uh, asked him, yes.
Okay. Without, again, all the, whether it's conforming or non-conforming, it was just that, and I'm not saying simple as in bad or elementary or superficial. It's just that's what you did.
Well, let me, I'll, I'll unpack that a little bit if I may. So he did, he did see the existing structure where it is, where it is positioned. And then he did see the proposed and he offered, and he offered the opinion that, uh, where the view or frontage is diminished or compromised, then the market value would be diminished.
Okay.
All right. So.
But as you said though, he did, Commissioner Bronn, I've got a few more questions. So I, but I see you.
But here's the thing, I can't.
Didn't. But he, as you said, it was outside of his role to, to really uh, include in his analysis conformity with respect to setbacks and stuff.
What we said to him, and I, I, let me just say this. We can't prevent the applicant from building his home where the existing front of his property is. And we, we believe that the applicant has the right, just as my clients did, to build his home with the face of the structure aligned with the face of the existing structure. That is our position. We did show the existing location to the appraiser. Then we showed him the proposed and it does further block the view. And the appraiser provided the opinion that it will diminish the value of our property where it is proposed.
No, I get it. But what I'm focusing in on, and I think I, I think it's pretty, hopefully coming across is his analysis didn't include whether the proposal was in conformity with regulation setback because, uh, I'll, I'll just say it bluntly. If, if we assumed it was in conformity and you just moved, like in any house, I suspect on the beach, you moved it from one side of the lot to the other, you have the right to do that. But it may, and the, what you're saying may also be true, that it diminishes the property value of the one you're getting closer to. But you still have the right to do it.
Well, you, but that, that is exactly the thrust of my argument and this is exactly the point. So we may disagree. We may disagree about the interpretation of that regulation. And I know Mr. Went at will has offered that he believes that it's the closest point of the front of the structure and Mr. Sargent will, may argue that. I suspect he will. We believe that the clear language of the regulation says shall not be closer than the face of the existing structure. So we view that language as the face.
Got it. And I, and I know there's a different, and I, I'm not trying to have that interpretation argument here. What I'm trying to do is understand and make sure that what I understand the appraiser did is what, is what I'm trying to say is um, it was just the, he viewed the proposed, he, uh, he, he viewed where the existing structure was. He, he saw where the proposed structure was regardless of anybody's interpretation of setbacks and conformity and just made his analysis on the move itself.
Let me, let me put it this way. In some fantasy world where we agree with the, where we all agree on the interpretation of the regulation and the application of the regulation, which we don't.
I understand.
Even with those givens, the whole point of the regulation was to vest in this commission the ability to say that even if it is conforming with the regulation, you go to twenty seven point four, which provides what I will call the so-called soft standards that are interpreted by this commission. And even if, so it's not just an analysis of measuring distances and heights. It is a subjective, I'm going to say somewhat subjective, or I'm not going to say subjective. I will say softer analysis where this commission can exercise its discretion and say that this is inconsistent with the neighborhood, this impairs property values of neighboring properties. And therefore we feel that an adjustment to this plan is appropriate.
I get it. But my initial reaction though is and we, if he's moving, assuming again, and I'm, I'm assuming this without deciding that there's a conformant, that he's moving it to conforming, a conforming position. Then, uh, yeah, I can see how it would hurt maybe your neighbor because it gets closer. Certainly doesn't help hurt the other neighbor who gets farther away. So why would I, in the neighboring property values, I have one neighbor where it decreases, one neighbor where it increases, really probably naturally because you're moving it assuming conformity, you're moving it in conformance with what you're allowed on.
Because the, the other neighbor is going from having the house two feet away, having the house nineteen feet away. And we are going from having the house. Yeah, it's, I'm sorry, from having it two feet away to having it twelve feet away. And we are going from having it nineteen feet away, having it five feet away.
I get it. I mean, but I get it. I mean, my thought is though, when we normally hear about property, property market, it's a uniform increase or decrease to neighbors because, I don't know, you put a skyscraper there, um, and it obviously is going to hurt everybody, so to speak. But, um, I have a few other questions. Uh, anything else on this topic?
A modest move kind of solves this issue is the point.
Well, that's another problem though, that, that leads me into my second point. I, does your modest move rec, uh, suggestion, put it in compliance with what, and I'm going to say your interpretation because I understand there's a just a difference between staff, sergeant and you, whether it's three-way or two-way or whatever. But does your modification, does your client's suggestion put it in conforming, conformity with what your interpretation of the setbacks are, be it fronts or side or whatever?
My, my correct interpretation could be complied with easily. Yes.
Okay. Cause that's the problem. We're not, I mean, you, you recall what I said was, uh, you, the, the party should talk to see if they can come forth. Me, I don't believe are in a position to negotiate on your behalf by, you know, moving it in a compromised way, in a, in a way that is a compromise, excuse me. You know, we can only kind of apply the regulations. Um, it's really up to you two to, you know, to make a modification that would not otherwise be in compliance with regulation. Well, we don't need to get into that. Um.
Not for nothing, but we are always. Not for nothing, but we are always open to a dialogue.
I understand. Um, what Miss, earlier you were saying, uh, with Mr. Sergeant, uh, was a cute, was saying that your clients were getting the benefits, uh, of an interpretation. He disagreed with that. Uh, you only referenced the front wall, though. What I think Mr. Sergeant's points in saying, hey, I just want to be treated like the neighbors was when the neighbors came for their, um, application, compliance, whenever it was, staff used its interpretations with respect to setbacks, approved, uh, or made any, whatever approval was needed based on their interpretations, whether it was side or front. Um, and that's how your neighbor's house was built. And I think his point is, if you're going to use staff's interpretations for regulations, these hard regulations, as you say, for the neighbors, you should use them for me. And he didn't, what, you know, he certainly didn't refer only to the front wall. Now, I don't know if, for example, you say the front wall wasn't moved. Is that just simply because it was where it had to be anyways? And that may not be the truth for Mr. Sergeant. So.
My clients, my clients have advised me repeatedly that they wanted to to twist the orientation of the house. And they were not permitted to do that. And I know that they were advised by their engineer, who was the same engineer uh, advising the applicant here, that they could not twist the house and angle the house in a manner that brought it in front of the existing front wall of the house.
But is that because of the issue, the issue of twisting? Or because staff's interpretation about the closest point to the sound uh, was just held true because that's how it was? I mean, my point is this, it strikes me, Mr. Sergeant makes a fair point that whatever interpretations that were used for the neighbor with respect to the hard, um, regulations, as you said, makes sense that, at least initially, that it should be applied to him. And I think that's his main point. And if you were just, if you think that that's, you know, the neighbors were using your interpretations, for example, or something, that's where I need more clarity on.
My understanding is that my clients had gotten a variance as to height, as some sort of.
Aside, I don't think height's really an issue really here.
Well, I agree. But in terms of the, uh, setbacks, it's our, our house is compliant.
Yes. But using the interpretation of staff, I believe, correct?
But we honored the, no, we honored the front wall of the existing house.
Okay. And just lastly, as I understand it too, the only variance I think your name, your client's had was for height, right? If you recall.
If the, um, if the chairman would just bear with me for one moment, I want to just, uh, look at one exhibit that I think would be uh, very hopeful here.
I saw Commissioner Braun had a question. Did anybody else, any other members of the commission have questions? Commissioner Braun, you're up next.
Uh, if you'll just bear with me for one moment, Mr. Chairman.
That's fine. I just wanted to get a sense from the colleagues.
Um, I am looking at the exhibit that I submitted. And my client's home was, um, is fully compliant with the, all of the applicable regulations based on the grid. And it's in the record. Um, it's in the record in the as-built survey that I submitted. Uh, that the existing, the proposed and as-built are all within all the tolerances of the zoning regulations.
Commissioner Braun.
Um, Attorney Green, are you, when you discuss moving the proposed house with the red box you have on that one, um, site plan, the red area is where it is now, and you're proposing not, you're sort of proposing, sort of split the baby in half, move it halfway to where they want it, not all the way, more or less?
Uh, let me.
That we have the discretion to do that because twenty seven says we can do that. And what you're telling us is that would solve the property value problem. Is that what you're saying?
I think that.
I'm trying to figure out if there's a reason why they moved it over other than to give their rear cottage of, of view. Is there another, did, it was another engineering reason to move it from one side to the other of their property?
There is no indication in any of the materials that were submitted that there's any engineering aspect to that.
And the straightening of the house, the red box you drew on that plan, that's a little bit at an angle. Is that what we're talking about when we're saying the front wall is moving a little bit closer to the ocean when they straighten the house out?
This red line is the face of the existing house.
Correct.
It, um, largely lines up with, um, my client's home.
Okay.
And you'll see this thick black line that I'm drawing my cursor across is the proposed front line of the house.
Could you do, I wasn't getting the wrong diagram. Could you move your cursor again so I can see that?
The, yeah, I don't, can you see my cursor?
Yeah, I was looking at the one on my computer. Okay, now I see it.
So the red line is the face of the existing structure. And the black line is the, um, face of the proposed house.
I was looking at the other black line, and the ocean is to our left in this diagram.
The ocean is to the left. And this is the edge of the porches on the house, the balconies on the house. Which are subject to the setback.
And that, that's not an issue here. It's the house.
No, it's the, it's the porches and balconies.
Okay, thank you. Attorney Green.
Oh, okay. So, uh, the CAM application drawings are all three years older, or older than three years. And they show the, a different um, orientation in terms of there are stairs that are shown on the CAM application that project, that it doesn't show the current, um, design of the stairway that's, uh, on the back of the house, which on the CAM application projects towards the water. It doesn't show the buried stone wall that the applicant references that apparently is ungraded. And that's not reflected in the CAM application that might be relevant to the CAM application. There is a low retaining wall on the west side of the structure that is not shown on the CAM application. That it's not shown on the CAM application. And the CAM application all, and the CAM review is all uh, three years old. Uh, so, uh, I would suggest that, that that may not be a, a great precedent for this commission to rely upon. Uh, interestingly, uh, and I'll just show you one more thing here. Uh, I don't know if my screen share changed. Uh, let me. So one of the things I was, uh, this is interesting. The, uh, I had, and obviously the applicant has updated its, uh, drawings, but this, this overlay of the two drawings by my client from the time that they initially did their survey to the date that the as-built was done. Interestingly, the elevations, and you can see how mean high water changed by, uh, several feet. And interestingly, the elevation of five point two, where the coastal jurisdiction line changed dramatically. And as Mr. Staff tells me all the time from the Huntington Company, uh, who did these drawings, you know, mean high water changes every twelve hours, basically. But it's just interesting how, um, and it just shows how this commission has to be kind of vigilant in looking at drawings at the beach um, in terms of their dimensions and the location of, uh, mean high water and in terms of the lot volume and in terms of, uh, sort of dimensions and that kind of thing, because it really influences development and obviously dramatically can change the size of the structure and where the structure is located on the lot. Uh, so once again, the applicant really did not satisfy the, the sort of soft standards in twenty seven point four. There is no, um, evidence contradicting the appraisal information that we had provided. And once again, this commission is vested with sort of this discretion in imposing the standards in twenty seven point four. Uh, and, uh, on behalf of my clients, we urge the commission to either, uh, modify of this or impose conditions or to deny it without prejudice. And, uh, I can assure the commission that with, you know, some reasonable accommodations made on this plan, that my clients would support the development, um, of the property. Um, and I certainly want to thank you for your generous patience. And I know this is gone, uh, on for a while, but I, again, appreciate your patience. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any other questions for Attorney Green? Does any other member of the public wish to be heard on this item? I don't believe I see anybody in chat. If you are on a phone, uh, Ms. Harrigan, what's the, what's the way to get off mute?
Yep. If any member of the public wants to speak on this item, they would just have to press star six if they're on a cell phone. And that would unmute them if I had to mute them. I mean, they should be able to indicate that they'd like to speak on this item.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to be heard on this item? Hearing none. Attorney Sergeant, you have your, excuse me, Mr. Sergeant, you have your rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, boy, Mr. Green, that was quite special. You're obviously better at talking than you are at reading surveys. Emeline, pull up the, um, two surveys, please. The, uh, location survey and the as-built for Mr. Green's clients I submitted in the, uh, packet three weeks ago. And that looks about right.
Sorry, was it at the end of these or was it, oh, it's on the sixteen twenty-three. Sorry, never mind.
Yeah, sixteen twenty-three, and then there's the as-built. There's one before, which is the improvement location survey, and the second one's the as-built.
Okay, there's the as-built. Um.
You can open up as-built first if you'd like, either one.
Do you want me to zoom in or out?
Uh, I'm not seeing anything right now. I'm seeing your computer screen with the files.
Oh, okay. Just, um, okay, can you see it now?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, okay, that is the, this can be difficult to see because it's so bright. Um, but there is, good. On this as-built survey, there is one.
Hold on one second. Is, if you're not, hold on, Mr. Sergeant. If you're not speaking right now, please make sure you're on mute. Go ahead, Mr. Sergeant.
Okay, there is one distance shown from the bottom left corner of their property, which would be the southeast.
That's one. Where the cursor is?
Yes, that's correct, right there.
Do you want me to zoom in?
Can you zoom in there?
Yep.
Hit it again. All right. Now, if you take that south easterly corner and you go towards the water on your left on the computer screen, you'll see a distance is one nineteen point two. Right in the middle of our screen right now. That distance of one nineteen point two is the distance of that entire front wall of their new home. If it was different on the westerly corner of their property, something other than one nineteen point two, it is surveyed as one nineteen point two from east to west, one distance. Okay? Now, Emeline, if you could, you need to find the location survey, which shows the location before they built their new home. One nineteen point two is the number.
Let's see. This is the improvement location survey, I think.
Hmm, that's not, you don't have any distances there.
Okay, let me check and see if I can get to the.
Came from, um, the Huntington Company, I believe, all your files.
Let's see.
It's a shaded structure over their older home.
Can you see this one?
Yep. That's not showing the two distances of the easterly and westerly corners. They came in a pack at the exact same time and date.
Is it part of Attorney Green's exhibits?
Part of mine.
I, I think there was one, a file that, uh, Mr. Sergeant submitted that we had labeled supplemental materials.
Okay. All right, let me just go to the, um, apologize. Just going to see if I can get to the town. Do you think we put it on that? Do you think it was in the?
March, March twenty-first.
Then it should be in the.
It's on our G drive, but I don't know if you have access to that from where you're sitting.
No, I don't think so. Um.
Sergeant, why don't you describe, uh, the document you're thinking about? And, uh, I assume that it's the same number or whatever they are. Please.
I got it, Mr. Chairman. So.
Thank you.
The as-built shows a home with the entire front wall at one nineteen point two feet from mean high water. The, and here are two smaller hard copies. All right, this is the one nineteen point two. And here is the location survey that was the home before built.
Why don't you just tell us on the bottom right, uh, the date of the survey, who did it?
Yeah, the same company. It's, uh, Huntington Company. The date of the survey is one fifteen, twenty twenty. As-built, we just saw there is four thirteen, twenty twenty-one.
And that's of your neighbor's property, correct?
Correct. I'm just trying to refute everything Mr. Green said. And to be perfectly clear, if you saw the survey, the home before it was built was on their easterly corner, one nineteen point two feet. The home on the westerly corner was nine, one nineteen. The home on the westerly corner was nine, one nineteen point five feet. So they swung the house point three feet closer to the water. Which is not large, and I'm not arguing it is large or small, but it is a movement that is the zoning department interpreted their application as the closest point. And they moved it to the closest point, the whole wall. So by Mr. Green's definition, which is you cannot move the front wall forward anywhere, his client's home, brand new, is not zoning compliant. And Mr. Green, you can't have it both ways. You can't say my client's can do one thing, but I can't do the exact same thing based on the zoning department's interpretation. Moreover, when I, uh, spoke to the ZBA two and a half years ago for my permission, you made the same argument, Mr. Green, that the front wall is being moved, the corner. And one of the board members said, pulled out a ruler and she measured and she said, "Oh, I think it's about eighteen inches." And Mr. Green, you retorted, and I quote, "I think it's a little bit more than eighteen inches. I think it's a few feet." But there's a Morikawa decision famously from the town of Weston. In Morikawa, someone built a home and the home was six inches too tall. And before the, before that case is over, the roof was taken off the home and it was lowered six inches. And the principle that was, that came from Morikawa that the Supreme Court has held to consistently, is there's no such thing as a minor variance or mar, or a minor encroachment. It either encroaches or it doesn't. Because once we get soft on line limits, then we, then you lose the concept of uniformity in enforcement of the zoning regulations. So the zoning regulations are by design, as the Supreme Court has interpreted them. They are bright line regulations and bright line limits, except where they specifically say otherwise, unquote. If your client's home is point three feet forward of their existing, of their older existing front wall, then they are not zoning compliant by your standards and the state Supreme Court's standards. If you accept the fact that the, our zoning department interprets the closest point to the sound, then you must accept that they use closest point on my application. But let's dig deeper. You point out eleven point twelve. Eleven point twelve is the setback from Long Island Sound. I'm going to read right out of the zoning regs right now. And we're going to talk about this, this front wall. "The minimum setback of building construction of Long Island Sound shall not be close to the front wall of the building existing as of the date of the adoption of these beach district regulations facing Long Island Sound. Or, if a vacant lot, then no closer to the mean high water line of Long Island Sound than a line drawn between the two closest front corners of the closest house on your side, including porches, but not open decks on the ground floor, except that in no case shall the setback be less than twenty-five feet. This setback shall also apply to fences and other structures more than one foot above the ground." So, if we go back to my survey, Emmeline, please.
In your, in the applicant rebuttal?
Yeah, the brand new survey, just put in, yes, just submitted last week.
Gotcha. Can you see that?
I'm looking at the entire commission right now.
Not, not yet.
Okay. Sorry?
Oh, thank you, Ms. Harrigan.
Yeah, thanks. Um, just blow that up to see the front, the, the building there, if you don't mind. Mr. Green's picture with the red box, it'll also be fine. Either one of these is fine. Saw the same thing. All right, so there is a lighter line which has stairs and a landing to go up to the elevated beach house. There is a darker line, which is the front wall of my house, proposed house. At no point is the proposed front wall anywhere closer than the existing front wall now. That is to say, my easterly front wall is sliding back from the sound and my westerly point of the front wall is staying at the same spot. Say it again. My front wall is not going closer than my existing front wall at any spot. So then, one might say, then, presumably Mr. Green would say that, well, the regulations say that the setback shall also apply to fences and our structures more than one foot above the ground. And I think probably we're all clear on what fences are. I'm not putting any fences forward. The question is, are my stairs and landing a structure? Well, this is the beach district, and if you think of the beach district, when I think of structures in front of someone's home going towards the water, I would think of like, um, like a tiki hut or a boathouse or, um, a gazebo where you have your lounge chairs underneath. Something that has walls and a top to it and the zoning regulations are saying, well, you can't do that. Basically, you're in front of the front wall and that's not allowed. So the question might be for the commission, is Mr. Green's interpretation of my stairs and landing a structure? Or is my interpret, interpretation of things like, you know, tiki huts structures? Well, fortunately, we have that answer. If we go to the general provisions, um, in our zoning regulations, and I submitted those as part of the packet last week. And we look at two point eight point two point five. We are going to get a definition that's going to answer Mr. Green's contention that my stairs and landing are a structure. Because in fact, they're not. Two point eight point two point five says, and I quote, "No non-conforming use of this building or other structure shall be penalized or otherwise require a variance for setback or lot coverage to elevate an existing structure to the required elevation standards of the National Flood Insurance Program and for the necessary entrance and egress stairs and landings required as a result of elevation." All right, what's this saying in common speak? If you have a home on the beach right now and you pick it up and you need stairs and landings to get up into your house, which seems quite likely since you're picking it up to FEMA standards, you don't need a variance and you're not going to get penalized. But, and you say, "Well, I'm not building, I'm not picking up an existing structure. I'm building new." And I agree. But that's not what I'm driving at. What I'm driving at is the nature of the language. This thing says, buildings and structures are over here and stairs and landings are over here. And the operative word is the conjunction and. They're defining them, defining them differently. It's like saying, uh, cats and dogs make great pets. Well, cats are over here and dogs are over here. Cats aren't dogs, dogs aren't cats, but they both have one thing in common. They make great pets. Two point eight point two point five says, buildings and structures do not need a variance. And for the necessary entrance and egress stairs and landings, they are distinct. Stairs and landings are not structures. If it did, it would say buildings and structures, including stairs and landings. But it doesn't. It defines them differently. And so if stairs and landings are not structures, then the stairs and landings by Mr. Green's difficult standard is not violating eleven point twelve. By the stand though, that his clients and our zoning department is used, however, is still compliant. It is using the closest point. So to be clear, my front wall is not going in front of my existing front wall. Now, if I may, I'll go very, very briefly through. I don't get paid by the word. I'm going to very briefly go through Mr. Green's, um, uh, his presentation three weeks ago. And we're going to read, review all these things. Mr. Chairman, you did a nice job looking at the, um, property consultants. It did not reference, you already took all my words. It did not reference any particulars of my property. My property is consistent with zoning regs. And so, yes, it is likely that some of their, uh, views will be clipped, just like some of my views are clipped when they moved their house towards me seven feet and picked it up eight feet in the air. So I'm not contending that's any other than when homes were picked up and rebuilt larger, some, somebody's going to win, somebody's going to lose. Um, I will say that for the placement of my particular home is that if you look at the survey, it's roughly nineteen feet evenly on both sides to homes in the east and Mr. Green's clients to the west. And so that was part of the decision-making process. Had nothing to do with the view in the back cottage. Had to stick in the home in the middle of the two existing homes. Okay? The second, um, slide of Mr. Green's presentation, Trench House Engineering, he brought in a engineer from Southbury, talked about the existing lot and saying how it's not, um, it's not, it's over fifty feet and therefore the setback should be larger. No. Survey still says it's forty-nine point three. I put through my, um, my land records there for you to see. I own from the sound to the creek. Everyone who owns both sides of the creek has a contiguous pop, property. So we own the creek and there's easements for cars to drive over our property. So everything he said about trying to take off the creekside piece of my property is factually untrue. You can't, because it's only twenty feet wide at its widest. In order to have a, um, a conforming beach lot, you need to have a fifty by fifty square and ninety-three hundred and seventy-five square feet. Isn't that right, Mr. Went? Yep, so my creekside property is contiguous and attached to my beachside, always has been and will be always unless they change the zoning regulations. So ignore everything Mr. Trench House said about my property. Next slide. I admittedly don't know anything about CAD, computer aided design. I guess that these things are somewhat true. Um, I'll take it at face value. But all it's showing is that my home now is a lot higher, which is true. I have to go higher according, according to FEMA. And it's closer to theirs because I have to go closer to theirs. My existing home is only one point nine feet from my neighbor to the east. It's a five foot minimum. Just like their previous home was approximately two feet to the neighbor to the west and they pushed it seven feet towards me. It's the mirror image. Um, we already talked about their survey. The last one, this is a great one. The survey from nineteen eighty-nine, I'm not sure why Mr. Green did put that in there. My survey was two and a half years too old and this is thirty-three years. That was a nice waste of time. So we can move along through that. Throw that survey away. And uh, moving on to other things, submissions from just last week. All of my neighbors want this done, except for Mr. Green's clients. Everyone. Not a single person hasn't said, "Hey, I hope it works out for you, Greg. Good luck. Be nice to see the old girl turn that, torn down and a new home put in." The zoning department has reviewed this twice. I've demonstrated to you on their survey that everything he's fighting against on my survey is what his clients did on their property. He was reviewed by the state. Losing my papers right now. I have the DEP, this is the wildlife biologist. And she said, "I reviewed natural diversity database maps and flowers grounds project. I do not anticipate negative impacts to the state listed species resulting from proposed activity to site." I have the Department of Energy and environmental protection review the application. And they said, "We commend the applicant for proposing a stormwater management system where none currently exists. The plans on commission should consider requiring the stormwater systems condition of the CSPR approval, which I designed myself and is, and an engineer certified. So I am going to do the, the water recharge system." I don't know what else I need to do. Zoning Department, twice, ZBA, ZBA Chairman, it was, it was the closest point. Survey is saying it's closest point. The state giving you surveys showing they've done everything that I want to do. I am humbly asking you to let me build my family home. Mr. Green's clients live on Park Ave in New York City. They built a vacation home, picked it up to the maximum height they could, and now they're fighting me for me doing the exact same thing to make it zoning and FEMA compliant. It is absolutely outrageous. And so I'm open to any question you have and I hope that you're comfortable with voting for this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sergeant. Does any member of the commission have questions for Mr. Sergeant? Okay. Anything else, Mr. Sergeant?
I'm good. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for your presentation. Uh, I will close this matter. We will move on to the next, which is, find my agenda, please. Nine thirty-six Sasko Hill Road, special exception application of the Country Club of Fairfield contains the construction of paddle tennis court and warming hut.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Good, thank you. Good evening. For the record, my name is, uh, John Fallon. I'm an attorney in Fairfield. It's a pleasure to be in front of the commission tonight representing the Country Club of Fairfield. Uh, I think it's a fairly straightforward application. I'll try to be brief. Uh, what we are seeking your approval of is the construction of one additional paddle tennis court and a new paddle tennis hut, as shown on the plans submitted. With regard to the new court, it will be built at the north end of the three existing courts. Those existing courts have been in place, uh, since nineteen sixty-five, so fifty-seven years. So we're simply adding one court, uh, to our, uh, use of the other three. Uh, the hours of operation of our paddle tennis facility will be unchanged as it has been for many, many years. Uh, that will mean there'll be no activity, uh, at paddle tennis after ten PM. With regard to the hut, uh, it's constructed along the west side of the existing courts. Uh, we have done, uh, significant outreach to our neighbors. Uh, in addition to the town letter that goes out as part of your special exception applications, we sent out a letter, uh, with the plans to everyone within five hundred feet. Uh, we didn't receive any, um, questions, feedback. We reached out directly to the Director Butter, uh, personally. And I don't believe, uh, any of the neighbors have any objections or concerns with regard to the application, which is understandable since, as I said, we're basically adding one court where there's already three and a new hut where there's a hut that's been there for many, many decades. Before I just give you some brief overview in terms of background, I'd just like to call on Jay Vilade of Mark Finley Architects. He's going to give you a very brief, um, overview of the layout, uh, kind of comprehending what I've just said. He'll also give you a brief overview of the, uh, architectural design of the new hut. Jay?
Yes, Emmeline, can you, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Emmeline, can I share my screen?
Yes, go ahead.
Yep. All right. Okay, so what I've got here is the site plan. Um, the three existing courts, one, two, and three are right here. The existing, uh, paddle hut is here and the existing pro shop right here. Just to give you a, uh, am I...
Hey, I don't see you on the screen yet. Um, Emmeline, do you have?
No, I can see it.
Oh, you can? Okay, then go ahead, Jay. I'm sorry. I may, I, I can't, but if everyone else can, that's fine. Sorry.
Okay. John, can you mute yourself? I'm, I'm getting a little feedback. Um, to the right is where it is Sasko Hill and then these are, this is the existing parking lot. Our property line for our neighbor is right here. So three courts, existing building, existing building. What we're doing is proposing a fourth court back here and then connecting them all with additional decking and our new, uh, warming hut. So this is the plan, again, just, uh, in a little more detail. The grade areas are existing. The, the lighter areas are our new proposed decks, new proposed paddle court and our new proposed paddle hut. The paddle hut itself is twenty-four by forty-eight, so it's about eleven hundred and fifty-two square feet. Um, the building itself is, uh, about twenty-one feet from average grade to midpoint of the roof. The plan is to match the existing, uh, the new paddle court with the existing paddle courts as they sit right now and to match the railings and then our new, uh, building would be asphalt roof, painted siding. Painted siding, uh, uh, wood windows and, uh, and shutters to match the, the clubhouse, which we redesigned and built over the past couple of years. Uh, we have a brick chimney right here. And then from the court level, lots of glass windows looking out on the courts. For the viewing, uh, while people are warming inside. That is basically it. John, do you have anything else that you need me to add?
Uh, no, Jay will be here if anyone has any questions. Thank you, Jay. Uh, the inland wetlands agency did unanimously approve the application on January fifth of this year. That was application or permit number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two oh four. So by way of summary, uh, you know, we, we have undergone with our facilities planning committee over the past few years. An assessment of the future needs of the club. And one of the things that came loud and clear was that based upon the popularity of our paddle tennis program. It was warranted add the new court and the hut that is before you tonight. Uh, this is designed and will meet the existing demands of our current membership. It's at the same location, as I've said, where three courts and, and a hut have been located, uh, for fifty-seven years. We did do the outreach to the neighbors very proactively, uh, to make sure they were aware of the application. And in essence, really the application is simply consistent with the commitment that the club has made and that this commission has been very supportive of. And we appreciate that in maintaining and improving our facilities. Uh, so that, uh, the existing needs of our membership, uh, can be addressed and the club can stay, uh, beneficial and active and a resource for our members and for the community. So we'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have. Uh, we hope you might favorably consider this application and approve it. And I thank you for your time.
Commissioner Braun?
Hi.
Hold on, Commissioner Braun, hold on. Um, if you're not speaking, uh, can you please put yourself on mute? Attorney Fallon, you'll be fine because you have to answer the question, obviously.
No, I think Attorney Fallon's the one who's got the feedback.
Oh, does he really?
Yeah. So he's got to wait till he answers to unmute.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Okay. Um, could you possibly provide the wetlands? Report. Uh, I couldn't find it on, I couldn't find it anywhere on the town website. I'd like to have that added to the record and take a look at it. Also, I didn't see the DEP wildlife survey. Usually there's a wildlife survey in the package when you're doing something on the coastal area and, and I didn't, there's no coastal site review needed here. Is that true? I, I don't know if I saw that in the package.
Right. There's not a CAM site plan review. We will be happy to submit. I'll send it to Mr. Went for your record. First thing tomorrow, a cap, a copy of the inland wetlands permit that was approved.
Why? Is it because it's, explain why there's no jurisdiction of the, of, there's no CAM jurisdiction here because it's farther away from title wetlands? Is that it?
Correct. I mean, Mr. Went can elaborate on that, but there, there is no CAM requirement here. Just a special exception requirement.
On the, on the site plan, I assume that's the inland wetlands flags then.
Correct.
Property, right?
Correct. And that's right. We had to get an inland wetlands permit. Correct.
Okay. So if I could get that, that'd be great. Um, I worry about being so close. I mean, it's a very small project, obviously. Um, it looks, you know, looks, it doesn't look like it harms anything. It does add a little bit more maybe impervious surface or a little bit more. Um, it, it, the footprint is bigger than what it is now. Do you know how much bigger the footprint is than what you have there now? And if they're going to replace any trees or anything that they're cutting down, I just worry about wildlife in that area. It's kind of sensitive.
Yeah, I think is, I don't, I think Mr. Carey may be on the call. Uh, Brian Carey of Lantech had represented us with regard to that. Brian, are you in on the call? If not, I'll address the question.
Yes, I'm just trying to stretch my video here. Um, yeah, so there, there is a planting plan. I could share my screen. I can bring that up and, uh, trust the train to you as well.
Go ahead, Brian.
Alright, second. Can you see that now?
Yes.
The plant, the planting plan, uh, basically we're mitigate, we're mitigating any trees that are removing, removed. Uh, out of one to one ratio. Uh, plus we're actually adding plants, um, wetland dependent plants in the area adjacent to the wetland border, uh, to provide a, a, a wetland buffer planting, uh, area here, repairing area. Uh, so we, we think that will be beneficial from wildlife perspective. Um, because the only, the actual, uh, decking and court are not considered impervious. Because they do allow the water to go through them. The only impervious area being added to the project is associated with the roof from the, the new clubhouse. Um, and we're, we're capturing that into a cold tech system, uh, that's directly adjacent to that. So there should be no increase in stormwater runoff associated with the, uh, with, with the project whatsoever. Uh, we've designed that. That's been reviewed by the engineering department as part of the previous conservation, uh, of, of wetland approval. Um, and so there should be no issues with that. Again, um, just to go back real quick, um, our planting plan, um, as you can see is very robust. It also includes a seed mix in this area that's a coastal tolerant seed mix. And the idea would be that that would be, uh, somewhat similar to the, uh, existing wetland. Um, that's, uh, directly into the Jason, uh, which is a wet meadow at this time.
And Mr. Carey, with your experience, um, as a wetlands scientist, I guess. Do you believe we need a DEP survey of wildlife in the area or is this too low of an impact for that? It, it's a pretty small project, but I, I always like to ask the question, is there a wildlife impact on my story? Something like that.
So as far as this project's concerned, it's very small footprint. I don't think there's been a wetland that's really been studied more in the town of Fairfield than this existing wetland here, uh, considering all the improvements that have been made at the club. Uh, while it's a relatively high functioning wetland, uh, it, it, its primary purpose is serves as a stormwater detention mitigation. Um, due to its size, it doesn't have much of wildlife benefit. If you were to, and we have, but if you were to look up the national, national diversity database, uh, national, natural diversity database, uh, of mapping. The whole area in, uh, around the country club's property is, is falls within that. Um, but that's basically, uh, that, that's around birds. This is not a, a large migratory bird or special, you know, there's nothing of special concern that's ever been really noted in here. And based on the small footprint of the project, it, it would not, um, have an impact on any, um, state or, or state threatened or endangered species.
Thank you. I had one last question that relates to, it was very interesting, um, schematic showing the lighting plan. It looked as though it was a nighttime view. Uh, can you? Bring it, it's like black screen with sort of lights lit up. Yeah. Like what is it? Is that what it's going to look like at night on the top picture or what, what are those two pictures depicts there?
This is, uh, I'll, you know, photometric surveys are not my specialty, but I'll, you know, I've looked at enough of them. The, the, the intensity is obviously looking like looking at a heat map. Um, and you know, it, this is just basically showing, um, you know, uh, that, that the, uh, light is not going to be being thrown off site. Um, this is more of a three D rendering of that. Um, but this is generally, um, you know, what the photometric plan would show.
That, that's not a, that's not a illustration of what the actual visual be, but it's a classic photometric commissioner that is designed to show that we are in compliance with the regulations as it relates to light containment on the site.
Is there light, is there, will this be used at night? And if so, are the lights aiming up or down?
The, the, the lights, the, 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 the courts will be used as they have been historically for many decades up till ten PM at night. And these light fixtures have been and, and, and will continue to be, um, of a nature. Uh, and, and you can see, I think, there we go. And those are not the, the ones that are on the court, obviously. But they will be downlit as, there you go, as you can, as required by your regulations. Again, all of it to ensure that there is total light containment as the regs require it within our property. And again, as I said, we've reviewed it with the neighbors, including the most adjacent neighbors. And, uh, shared these plans with them, including the lighting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can you cease sharing screen, please? Any members, any other members of the commission have questions? I can only see a few people. Uh, can you stop sharing, please?
I have one question. Go ask. Is the, the, is the current shed being just expanded or is it being demolished and a new one built?
No, we're going to keep, the, the current shed is very small. It's about, I think, five hundred square feet. So we're, we're intending to keep that shed and then the new shed will deal with, uh, as I said, the, the needs that we have based upon the popularity of the existing program. So, you know, we, 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 the application would allow us to construct the new shed. We'll keep the old one as well because, uh, we didn't want to take, you know, two steps forward and one step back. We really, the old shed will still be put to good use. Uh, the new shed obviously will help us ensure, uh, proper accommodations, especially for people, you know, when they're waiting to play, et cetera. So it, it will stay.
We'll, we'll go on in the old shed.
Same thing that's going on now. It'll still be used in conjunction with the paddle tennis courts and that, and the paddle tennis program. That's what it will continue to be used for.
Yes, I did visit the site today. I wondered why the fourth court isn't flush with the three, but it's probably something to do with the wetland. I saw large wetland meadow.
Yeah, we wanted to ensure that what we were doing was not going to have obviously any adverse impacts whatsoever with regard to the wetlands or anything else. And the design and location of the court and the, and the hut were, you know, carefully chosen and prioritized for that purpose.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other member of the commission have questions? Attorney Fallon, any issues with, um, the placement of these, with, uh, these new facilities with respect to the driving range?
No, they, they, they'll, they'll, you know, they won't have any impact whatsoever. And that again, we, we were careful, you know, because basically that you, you've had for fifty-seven years, as I said, the, the existing, uh, paddle tennis complex located where it is, and this is going to be consistent with that area. So there won't be any encroachment that would in any way impact the driving.
Well, not just that, but I mean, it doesn't jut out, so it's in the danger.
Correct.
Thank you. Any other members of the commission have questions for Mr. Attorney Fallon? Attorney Fallon, anything else, or can we move to public comment?
Uh, thank you. No, I appreciate your attention and courtesy.
Do any members of the public that wishes to be heard on this application? I don't see anybody signed up in the chat, which is fine. Uh, if you'd like to, you can may, please do so now. Or, uh, if you can just take yourself off mute and identify yourself, uh. Again, to anybody who called in, it is star six to unmute yourself. Correct, Ms. Harrigan, star six?
Yes, that's correct.
Any member of the public wish to be heard on this item? Going once, twice. Okay. So, uh, close the public comment portion of this application. Attorney Fallon, any last words?
No, thank you again for your time and consideration. Appreciate it.
Thank you. So I'll close, uh, this portion of the, this application, close this application, excuse me. We may move on to. Sorry, the next hearing for eight fifty-five Stillson Road subdivision application of eight fifty-five Stillson Road LLC. For two lots in an A zone.
So good evening. My name is Jim Crissides with Crissides Engineering. We are the site development engineers for the project. Um, as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, it's a proposed two lot subdivision. Uh, the eight fifty-five Stillson Road. Uh, Emmeline, may I please share my screen?
Yes, you can go ahead. If you have any trouble, let me know.
I'll take this time, uh, in case there's any member of the public that wishes to be heard on this item. After the applicant is done with his, uh, initial presentation, please sign up in the chat. Uh, the bottom right is the, at least if you're on remote is the chat. Please sign up for it. And as I've been doing, I will call for anybody, member of the public that wishes to be heard that does not sign up. Thank you. Whenever you're ready, continue.
Sure. I'm having a little trouble here, but.
Okay, that's fine. In case you were waiting on me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, can you see the JS map that I just brought up?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Uh, so I just want to give a brief overview of where we are. Uh, the hatch, the blue area is eight fifty-five Stillson Road. To, uh, it's, our property is to the south of, of the road. To the left is North Benson Road. To our right is, um, Denise Terrace, the school, the elementary school is right across, uh, the street. Black Rock Turnpike is further out to our east. Uh, we will most likely have to come back to this view to discuss, uh, a couple of neighboring properties that have expressed concern on this, but I, I guess the next step is to go into the, uh, the, look at the surveyor's map. So here we have the outline of the existing, um, residence as a single lot. The proposal is to subdivide into equal areas. This is in a, uh, A zone, residential A zone. With a minimum lot area of, um, a little over nine thousand square feet, nine thousand three hundred and seventy-five square feet. We are providing eleven thousand seven hundred and ninety-one on each one of these lots. Under existing conditions, uh, we see the primary residence attached in this area to the right. Uh, there is a detached garage all the way to the left, uh, in non-conformity as it's too close to the property line. And a driveway that comes from Stillson. In that, that acts as the side of the residence and the detached garage. Uh, so the proposal, uh, we were retained to develop a site development plan that would incorporate a proposed scheme of two new homes on this property. With two new driveways accessing, uh, Stillson Road. Associated grading and, and drainage improvements, as you can see in the rear and in the front of the, of the property. So the, the two, the two new homes will comply to setbacks. You know, all the relative, um, related, uh, zoning requirements, setbacks, uh, coverages. Obviously, we don't have specific architectural plans for these get, but the height will, will comply. Whatnot. But we did analyze, um, the property as, as these houses were, could be built if approved, obviously. Uh, we submitted plans. The original review from the engineering department, um, came back, uh, Laura had comments. We addressed those comments. We submitted the plans. And we have a positive letter from Laura Pooley, the conservation, uh, department. Looked at this application as well and gave us positive comments. Basically, we're not within the jurisdiction. And WPCA also doesn't have an issue with us, uh, creating a new lot and connecting it to the sewer system. If indeed, when, if indeed it's approved and, uh, we pay the, uh, INI fees. Uh, so, uh, I would like to point out a couple of things regarding how we graded the property and how we're draining it currently. Uh, there were some concerns, as I mentioned earlier. There were, there were two letters that, that I know of, two emails that I know of that came in, uh, from the owners of ninety-six, um, Allen Road, uh, wrote comments in thirty one, thirty-one Denise Trail. So I would just, uh, and it was mostly, I guess I could start with ninety-six Allen Road. There were two main issues. There were two main issues that I could see reading through those comments or notes. One is that the wetland buffer area may encroach into our property, which again is highlighted in blue. The wetland line seen on the GIS is this solid light green area. And here, the buffer zone is this darker line. You can see it encroaches into 96 Allen Road, but it's nowhere near our property. So, that is not a concern of ours. Now, the second issue is, is anybody that's a homeowner can feel, you know, their pain about flooding, a flooding situation that they're having at their property. Again, they're located in an area that is adjacent to wetlands, so some of the water comes through their lot to enter the wetlands. I don't think that is the case with our development here. As you can see, we don't abut 96 directly, but we abut number 90. Going back to the post-conditioned survey, we see that the contours in here are parallel to the backyard, which means that the water will drain back and not on an angle to 96 Allen, which is in this area in here. In addition to that, Laura Pooley has installed proposed swales along the property lines, which will not allow water to be shedded to the right or the left, to the east or the west. The water will be maintained, the historic flow of the water will be maintained going from north to south. And in addition to that, we proposed, based on Laura's comments, a burn along the back that will collect the runoff. And before it runs off into the neighbors, it will spill over the top of this burn. An additional measure, the subsurface drainage system that we have installed, interfooting drainage system. So, that is an additional measure. We also received a letter from the owner of 31 Denise Trail. And the three items on that would be, so the question was, there was a comment about why our plan doesn't have catch bases at the front of Lot A, which is on the left, and Lot B. I'm not sure if our neighbor has seen the latest plan, but obviously, the one that you see in front of you right now has a catch basin in Lot B and a trench train in Lot A. These were added for Laura Pooley's comments. Our original design had all the drainage going into the backyard, but it was deemed necessary to split the drainage front and back, which we have done. And so, there are catch basins in the front that pick up the driveway water and direct it into the subsurface drainage system. And from here, if Lot A trench train would overflow, it will be directly, directly into the catch basin. The runoff from Lot B will be piped directly into the catch basin. So, that was one item. The second question was, will there be a fence installed as part of this subdivision along the perimeter of these lots? I can't quite answer that question right now, but there will be either a fence or evergreen screening along the perimeter. Normally, if it's subdivision, it will be sold off, and the owner would wanna screen, obviously, there themselves from the neighbors. So, I don't have a clear answer other than either fence, some type of evergreen, like our provided. And the last question that was brought up was, how high would the stockpile area be? This is the sediment erosion control. How high would a stockpile area be? And how long would it sit on the property? For development like this, there are relatively smaller homes. I don't anticipate a stockpile area being more than eight feet high, maybe six and 10 feet, I guess, depends on the configuration. And normally, it lasts around six to nine months, I think. The majority of the stockpile happens when the basement is dug and before it's backfilled, before the basement, the foundation is backfilled. That's when the majority of the soil is kept on site. That normally takes a few weeks, and then the top soil gets stockpiled until the end, when everything is stabilized and spread over the property. I think I covered everything that was brought up during the letters. And so, I'll answer any questions that the commission or any neighbors have. And should I stop sharing, or should I keep the plan up?
Why don't you keep it up for a moment? Let's see if any members of the commission have questions.
Okay.
I can only see a few people. I see Commissioner Braun. So, if anybody else has a question after Commissioner Braun, just speak up, please. Commissioner Braun? You're on mute, Commissioner Braun.
There we go. Okay. One of, I read through one of the letters that you referenced. They showed a wetlands map, and I know that the conservation department concluded that there's no documented wetlands. Yeah, that's the one. Could you, are any of those, I don't know those abbreviations, what they mean. Are any of those close enough to the, obviously, it's like the regulatory, even around those that are identified are not where the little yellow house is, which is that park, I guess?
So, the way I read this, and this goes back to the paper maps that the town has, this solid outer line is the limit of buffer from the wetlands area. These here, the different soil types, dorthins, I'm not sure what WX is, I wish I knew. But it appears that the reason why they were having, and this is our neighbors at 96 Allen Road, the reason why they were having problems putting the shed in this area is because it falls within the buffer area of the actual wetlands. And so, this is the actual buffer of the wetlands. This green line, obviously, somebody drew in to show that this is the buffer area and that their piece of land falls within it. Now, this green line crosses our property, which is, that's the house. But that's just somebody circling the buffer area and has nothing to do with the buffer area.
Okay, thank you. And I can't pull up Laura Pooley's report right now. Did she, did any, obviously, no traffic study. It's only a two-lot subdivision. But did anyone evaluate sightline? Did she say sightline is okay for the egress? From each lot is having their own driveway onto Stilson Road, I guess. That's sort of a cross from Osborne Hill, I think?
Yes, there wasn't a, I'm sorry if I'm scrolling. I'm trying to find Laura Pooley's.
I don't remember seeing it. It might be in her report. I didn't remember seeing anything in any reports talking about whether there might or might not be adequate sightline, based on the speed of the traffic and everything.
There's no mentioning of it in there, but the road is straight and flat in that area. So, I don't anticipate any issues with sightlines. Because of the location of the actual driveways as well.
There's a, there's an entrance or, I'm trying to, okay, so there's sort of an entrance, or is that an egress from Osborne Hill? Kind of a cross.
Well, yes, I guess, briefly.
Does that?
This here?
New driveway gonna be across from the Osborne Hill? And I don't know if that's an entrance or egress. I don't remember. It might just be an entrance.
Well.
Right now.
Here, it shows across the street from us, so this is the limit of pavement, basically. And there's no entrance shown into the school.
I think there's an entrance right at the bottle down there to Osborne Hill. I'm just seeing, carry on.
Yes, there's one, there's one, I guess, to our west in this area.
Is that in the vicinity of one of the two, I don't, where the new driveways are in relation to that? Is that, will that require a light at some point for safety reasons? I don't know.
This, our approximate location of our driveway will be somewhere in here. This is off to the side.
So, it's not directly across from the Osborne Hill driveway?
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other member of the commission have questions? I can only see Commissioner Braun, Commissioner Francis, Commissioner Harrison, Commissioner Ford, Commissioner Francis.
There's a turnaround in the driveway, so the person can come out frontwards. Is that what this little rectangle is off to the side?
That is correct. Yes.
That's a very good idea on that street. Thank you.
Any other member of the commission have questions? Any, any other comments in your initial presentation, or should I, can I move to public comments?
Please, move on.
Okay. No. The applicant's initial presentation is over. Let's see, I see somebody in the chat.
Mr. Chair, we have Patricia Deely, who requested to speak earlier in the, in the meeting. She's the only one I have signed up. I don't know if Mr. Easley, who asked a question in the chat, would like to speak. He hasn't indicated that yet.
Understand. Yes, so just please sign up in the chat. Please do not write questions in the chat. The chat's not part of the record, so it's just really for us to help administratively see who should be up next. So, if anyone wants to comment, please sign up in the chat. But it was, Patricia, I lost her last name already, but it is her turn.
Hello, this is Patricia Deely. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I just wanna comment on that wetlands map. I'm the one that submitted the whole letter with the whole concern about the flooding and everything else. That map with that green circle that he said was randomly written on there was given to me from the town of Fairfield. When I had that done, we wanted to put our, as I said, we asked about putting the shed on the far side of our property, and we're told, no, that's definitely wetlands. You can't do that. So, I said, okay, what about the corner of my property, which abuts the corner of the 855 Stilson property? And they said, well, you're still considered the fringes of the wetlands, and she drew the green line all the way around. So, that is where that line came from. It's not somebody randomly doing it. That came from the town of Fairfield. And I literally had to fight with the town in order to get them to allow me to even just put a shed right there, which actually, like I said, the back end of the shed is right against the backyard of 855 Stilson. And we have had many, many problems with flooding. And all the properties on Stilson Road will tilt towards our property on Allen Road. And neighbors of mine, everybody was, gets, you know, problems with flooding at times when everything happens, when we have heavy, heavy rains and everything else. And I don't know if anybody had a chance to look at any of the photos that I took, that I submitted from the other side of our property with the water that comes from Stilson Road. It's not wetlands water that we're getting. It's the water that comes from heavy rains runoff down Stilson Road, onto the properties, and then coming in that direction. So, I mean, if there's going to be some kind of a collection thing put in behind the new property, that would definitely have to be done, because I don't know if you've seen the video too I submitted. There is a video of the water actively rolling down, and it's so forceful, it takes everything in its path and brings it along from Stilson Road all the way out to Allen Road. We have a neighbor that has large pieces of gravel that she has next to her garage. And when the water rolls that forcefully, it actually picks them up, brings them down our property, and out onto Allen Road. And this happens numerous times. I mean, we had to get, she had to get her landscaper numerous times last spring to clean them up, because they're all over our property. We can't do our, like, lawn mowing or anything, or we'd bust the lawnmower. So, the flooding off of Stilson with the properties pitched in that direction is a definite concern. And that's why I wrote that letter that I did, because if they're digging up all the property over there, putting in two foundations, changing the water table level, I'm just really concerned that that water rolling the way it does on the other side will start rolling on that side of my property, and that side is closer to my home. So, I just wanna make sure that whatever is done is done to really alleviate any potential flooding. Because as I said, neighbors on either side of me constantly get flooding as now. In fact, 90 Allen Road, they're always getting, like, flooding at their home. So, if this is gonna add more water, that's what we're concerned about. And I just wanted to make my point hurt, because, you know, I don't know what I'm gonna do if all of a sudden my house floods too. So, I mean, as I said, I don't know if anybody's had a chance to look at the photos or watch the video, but it's pretty severe. And we've had the town come out. They've actually acknowledged that there is a problem, but nobody's ever done anything about it. And that's our thing, is what if there isn't anything that can be done about it? Then what's gonna happen to our properties? So, that's where I stand right now. So, I just.
Thank you for your comments. We do review everything that is submitted to us via email, pics, videos, anything. Do you have any other comments?
No, that's my main concern, is just to make sure that they don't add to any of the flooding issues that we already have. Because whatever would come through off of Stilson on that side is directly next to my home. So.
Thank you for your comment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
First question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Braun.
Okay. Mrs. Deely?
Yes.
Noun's your name right. This wetlands map, which the town marked up that green line on, not you? Have you asked them to look at that in reference to this project? And also, second question, do you know what those abbreviations are? Like, is WX and UD? I know RN is a wetland soil. I don't really know if UD or WX are wetland soils.
I don't know what those are. I even tried looking that up. I have no idea. This is a map, as I said, was given to me when we put our shed in years back, and I still have it on file. So, I just pulled it out to look at it, to see where the wetlands are, you know, in relation to 855 Stilson. I mean, yes, it's only a tiny corner, according to that drawing. But still, I said, the way the water comes off of Stilson Road and the property is pitched, it's definitely a concern.
And I have not seen a video. Obviously, it couldn't be in a PDF. I guess the question for our staff, I don't know if the video is able to be looked at. And have you?
See a video either. I saw the pictures, but I didn't see a video.
There was a video attached too. It has to be opened, I believe.
Is the town engineering department aware of the existing flooding problem?
Yes.
Yes. My neighbor on the other side of us has, like, contacted them numerous times, and so have I. And we've provided pictures, videos, everything. They've even come out. They've looked at it. And we never get any, you know, any information, I mean, no, like, you know, things to, like, take care of it or solve it, nothing. So, that's like, that's why we're concerned. Like, you know, if we have this problem already existing and nothing is being done about it, what's to make us think that maybe if they start digging up on the other side, that we're not gonna get the same problem on the other side of the house?
These review lists that you're showing in the photos, where are they in relation? Is that your yellow house there, or somebody else's?
No, that's, the yellow house is behind us. It's on Stilson Road. It's only about three homes down from 855 Stilson.
No, I mean, the house that's in the picture with the river.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that house is actually located on Stilson Road. So, that.
Okay, what's that address?
Um, I don't know.
Must be 875 or 891.
If I may, Commissioner Jim went for the record. On that map, you'll see the map that's on the screen. The blue house is the Deely residence. The yellow house is the current house on the subject parcel. The garage in, that's kind of colored in in pink. Three lots removed is the garage that's in the photos that were submitted. It's, and I did review this with the engineering department. It looks like, and the video, I don't know if it's forwardable, but it's essentially, the still photos show it, the. the still photos show it, the, the it's basically that water comes off of Stillson Road, pours down the driveway of that residence uh, uh, in in down as as indicated in the photo. I think the issue there is that the driveway apron for that house, I don't know the exact address on Stillson, doesn't have a high enough pitch uh in the first six feet of the driveway to contain the gutter drainage. So there's a catch basin near there too, that I did discuss it with Bill Hurley, didn't know whether that was clogged or not, but it it appears that the driveway isn't pitched correctly, so when in a heavy rain event, the the rain that should be contained in the gutter of Stillson pours down that driveway of that lot that's um, in in the, with the garage that's kind of highlighted in pink there. That was our observation of the photos that were supplied by uh Mrs. Deely.
Is there, is there water coming off of eight fifty-five right now? I guess this is a question for either Mr.
No.
No, it it doesn't come off of there now, but that's our concern, is that once you take a foundation that's been there for like, what, a hundred and fifty-five years or whatever? And how that, and however many, and dig it up and start putting new ones in, what's it gonna do to the water table? That's, that's my concern, because if it changes the water table, we could easily get water running down that side too. Because, you know, you're gonna take, it, right now that property has a lot of, a lot of land on it. You know, a lot of grass, a lot of area that can absorb the waters if they come through. So if you get rid of a lot of that, what's to say that the water has nowhere to go and where's it gonna go? Out to Allen Road.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Ms. Deely.
You're welcome, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, next we have uh Ken Easley, followed by Andrew Baumgartner.
Thank you. Mr. Easley.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, yeah. Um, just a question, there'll be a uh looking at the plans, it looks like they're gonna remove a hundred-year-old oak tree that's on the Stillson side of the existing house. Um, is there a plan to uh provide, you know, shrubbery or some kind of plantings uh to shield the neighbors on the adjoining properties?
So you can certainly ask questions of the applicants. Um, the applicant, uh, I'm I'm assuming has heard you because he's on here, um, and he can answer it during his rebuttal.
Yeah, great, 'cause yeah, I'd like to see something along those lines. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, are you, anything else, Mr. Easley, or is that it?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, just wanna make sure. Mr. Baumgartner.
Uh, good evening. Um, I live at eight ninety-one, two houses away from the posed subdivision. I just wanna first Yes.
Thank you.
I first want to back up with Patricia Deely mentioned about the flooding. My property backs up into their property. And years ago, the town deeded uh, that property, which is clearly in a flood area, to the four houses contiguous to the that property. The Deelys have the largest lot of, uh, they were deeded the largest piece. But it it's, when it rains very heavily, the uh, the height of the water is probably several inches. That wasn't, my my main point is a safety issue, which may be, may, may not be in your purview. Maybe it's a police requirement. But on Denise Terrace, uh, several students who go to Osborne Hill live on that street. And they often cross the street, not at the crosswalk, but right in the middle of the street. Uh, there's no walkway there and it's a very dangerous situation. So, uh, that danger's gonna increase if uh, with these two properties, if the young kids who live there. Um, I don't know if you, that's a zoning issue, that's a police issue, but I think it needs to be addressed.
Thank you.
That's the end of my comment.
Okay, thank you very much for your comment.
Sure.
Uh, we can stop sharing the screen now, I think. Um, does any member of the public wish to be heard? And the other member, excuse me.
And just a reminder, if you're calling in on your phone and you're muted, if you'd like to press um star six, you can unmute yourself to indicate that you'd like to speak on this public hearing item.
Any other member of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Well, that'll end the public comment portion of this application. We can go back to the applicant for any rebuttal.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so to respond to Mrs. Deely this Allen Road, uh, just gonna repeat what I originally said, we we are maintaining historic flows from the property. We're not regrading in a way to uh direct water in any different way that it always has been. Um, if we can improve the situation, we will, I think we have by installing the berm along the back of the property line, which holds back uh more water than it's held back now. Uh, we provided two, two drainage systems for each of the properties. And one thing I didn't mention during my presentation is that the, the current apron right now uh, is is very shallow and is just shy of the catch basin, so it looks like if the water in the road builds up an inch or two higher than the lip of the driveway, it has a tendency of of jumping over, just like it's happening down the street from us. So with the two new driveways, that situation will stop happening. The water will stay in Stillson Road and enter the catch basin. And we, um, regarding the screening, um, I I don't have a a solid answer uh for the commission at this point, but it will be either a fence or our variety depending on how the the project moves along. Uh, there's gonna be some type of screening, but I don't know what what that is at this point. Um, and as far as uh traffic and crossings, um, I can't speak to the overall dynamics of the neighborhood, but uh, we uh, we have the requirement of installing a brand-new sidewalk with uh concrete curbing and aprons in front of this development to, as a new development, we'll have a new sidewalk along the front of the I think, um, that's what I have right now. I'll be glad to answer any further questions.
And does any member of the commission have questions? Any final comments from the applicant?
Uh, no, thank you for your time.
Okay, which is fine, yeah. Okay, so I will uh close this application and I believe that's the last one on our agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick but can we possibly get that schematic of the wetland over to conservation and have them just address it? I know they said there were no documented wetlands, but I would like for them to just look at that, since it did originate in their department some years ago, perhaps they could simply explain what that means in reference to this project?
I mean, I think, uh, I think that won't be a problem. I mean, commit, they have already signed that they don't have jurisdiction, but maybe they can set some light on what the circle meant.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So I will close this uh hearing, um, and uh wish everyone a good night.
Thank you.
Any questions that need to be directed to staff, obviously, as we've done, please do so, um. But uh, have a good night, this, uh, we'll adjourn the meeting, uh, close this hearing. Take care.